Okay, I'd like to bring the Upper Moreland Township regular meeting for March 4th to order. First, I'd like a moment of silent meditation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on my mission under God in the resolve of justice for all. Matt, would you take role, please?
Ward one.
President.
Ward two.
Here.
Ward three.
Here.
Ward four.
Here.
Ward five.
Here.
Ward six.
Here.
Ward seven. Mr. President, all commissioners are present.
Okay, for presentations, we have two retirements. The first one is Karen O'Brien. If you would come up to the front. Okay, for Karen O'Brien, whereas Karen O'Brien was hired as a part-time secretary in the Parks and Recreation Department on October 14th, 1997, whereas in 1999 Karen moved to full-time position as a secretary with the Code Enforcement Department, and whereas in 2019 Karen returned to the Parks and Recreation Department as the department's secretary. And whereas in 2021 Karen's position changed to addition to holding the position as the Parks and Recreation Secretary, Karen's responsibility included the role of the receptionist for the township's administrative building. Whereas Karen dedication to the township over many years in various roles has shown commitment to Upper Moreland Township and our residents. Karen faithfully served the residents and citizens of Upper Moreland Township for more than 26 years and will honorably retire March 8th, 2024. Congratulations. Tom, have a hug.
General, can you come down? Got it. Thank you.
She certainly will.
As Brian Shannon would say, "I don't need the microphone, I'm loud enough." But I am not. Next, that Jim, James Murphy. Don't ask Jim, would you please come up? Congratulations. I don't want you to leave, but. Whereas Jim Murphy was hired in the Parks Foreman for the Parks and Recreation Department on August 30th, 2007, in a position he has held since. Whereas Jim advanced through the department's efforts by providing new and innovative practices in parks maintenance and snow removal. Whereas during Jim's tenure, the Parks and Recreation Department added additional full-time employees, acquired scores and additional acres of parkland and open space, adding to the department's responsibilities. Whereas Jim provided effective leadership in maintaining the township's parks and open spaces in a beautiful, well-maintained condition. Whereas through these and other efforts, our residents enjoy safe and aesthetically pleasing parks and open spaces throughout our township. So now proclaim that Jim, I'm used to Jim. Jim Murphy faithfully served the residents of this and citizens of Upper Moreland Township If you'd come up. for more than 16 years and will honorably retire on March 14th, 2024. This service award presented to Todd Smith in recognition of 25 years of dedicated service Thank you. to Upper Moreland Township, presented on this fourth day of March in the year 2024. Thank you for the first 25 years. Commissioners? I'm getting taller. I'm getting taller.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd. My microphone will be like.
Next, we have a service award presented to Todd Smith in recognition of 25 years of dedicated service to Upper Moreland Township, presented on this fourth day of March in the year 2024. Thank you for the first 25 years. Commissioners? I'm getting taller. I'm getting taller.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd. My microphone will be like.
Okay, thank you for the employees that were just honored. We sincerely appreciate our employees in this township. We feel they all do a tremendous job, and that's just not saying it. We see it. Okay, next we get into our regular meeting. Public comments, non-agenda items only.
Good evening, Commissioner Sue Worth-Demana, Ward 62. I just have a couple thoughts that have come to me today. I went throughout the township on an historical commission jaunt, and some things came to mind as I got to see the lay of the land before we go into real spring or whatever we call this time of year's seasons anymore. We can see a lot of our properties differently. And I'm not sure how to bring this all together and pivot around one central focus, but I guess the key sentence would be, I'd like greater consideration of what we have as ordinances in terms of what we put on our property, how we treat our property in our neighborhood, and a bit about the stormwater and the building out part as well that reflects into our zoning hearing. What I saw in going around was a great many RVs, trailers, boats on people's property. There is no way for your average resident to know as these things fill up outside of driveways, also on property, on grass, if the township is aware. There doesn't appear to be an easy way of determining as a resident, is that okay? Certainly if something is parked practically on top of your lawn on their side, but you know, right there, what do you say to them if they have a right to put it there? I think the answer is absolutely nothing. You may opine if it comes up or they ask, but other than that, probably not. So you're there with, is there something? And what I was told that we have to have an annual permit for some of these pieces of equipment slash RVs, whatever, and that there should be some type of awareness of code enforcement. That requires a right-to-know form to even know if that's there. So what I would like you all to consider as a change would be that the object, the 25-foot boat in your neighbor's side yard, you know, abutting yours, is tagged in some way that can be observed. Not that anyone's going to enter anybody's private property to observe it, but we do have sidewalks, we do have eyes, we can see. If there's a big enough tag on it, it means that the right people, i.e. code enforcement, looked at it, determined it should be there, it's okay, move on. We don't need to have Upper Moreland complaints with complaints about such things endlessly. It's fine. If there's a limit, that would be helpful, but I would like to see some greater clarification so the average resident would know. There's a lot of that. There's a lot of trailers in the street. I was told by code enforcement, that's a police matter, and I'll be talking to our chief of police about that, he will be able to direct us. But there are a lot of them. If you're not aware, you can, you know, take yourself on a tour. The other thing is that I think needs to change is, I've been looking at things that come before zoning hearing, and I've been before zoning hearing, and I've been to meetings just because I'm interested in what's going on, and a lot of the times those determinations are made based upon, there's no reason why somebody who owns private property can't, and that is the answer. I would like to ask us to be a little more understanding of the next, I've been here 46 years, Kip. So I ask you, I'm looking at Commissioner Alchesky, you know, I came here and I was here, and now I'm here, so 46 years is a long time. You think of being here 46 years, going forward in your twenties, and think about what you expect this township to look like. This township has changed dramatically and then not so. But if we're just going to consider the amount of land that your house sits on, your garage sits on, your driveway takes up, and we're going to determine that impervious surface, impervious surface calculus is the only thing we have to think about, and we don't have to think about slope, and we don't have to think about the fact that your backyard drops off like the Grand Canyon, and everybody below you, when you get the right to build that deck, that auxiliary building, that additional garage, whatever else you've been permitted, because legitimately the calculus works for the land, it just doesn't work anymore for the stormwater. So what did we do? We put up, I don't know how much they were, $20,000, it was a big number of gates all over the township, rightfully so, to protect ourselves from ourselves, by the way, because we can't figure out how not to drive through water, apparently. I don't know where that ranks, but as a psychologist, I could do a test and suggest that that's a lot of money to spend for not being the brightest people that we could choose to be. But we had to do that because we believed that we should do the right thing for as many people as possible. So we did that. But when we choose to allow, and I say allow zoning, noting that they're separate, I'm aware they're separate, but without this body, that body is not so independent that you can't influence certain things to change, I think more than just the calculus of land needs to be taken into account. A neighbor has clear-cutted the property, and I see again they're putting up a third auxiliary building. They have a decent piece of land, but they're also way uphill from my road, and I can tell you in the last two or three storms, because I calculated it, we've gotten additional water down into the penny pack. Comes across my property, goes under the street, comes out into the penny pack. So already the amount of work that's been happening over there in the past four years is creating, it should, you know, a greater amount of stormwater. You see it in the streets, that's why the gates are up. I just think we need a stronger look at these things as a township and come up with things that will take us for the next 46 years. So we're not still talking about that here at the dais. Thank you for listening, I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Trailer and boats, that's a pretty good request. Could you have Paul answer, or let's say bring in?
We do have an ordinance, you have?
We have it. What I want is, because we have three new people, and have Paul just give us an update on that issue at the CDC meeting, of the three new people. The zoning that you did bring up, no, this board does not have anything to do with that. That is a quasi, that's a judicial board. We are not allowed to do anything with them. That's why we send Sean when we think it's something out of the ordinary, we'll send Sean. We can change zoning. We cannot tell them that this is what we want them to do or lead them to any decisions. Those are just two answers that I can hint right off the cuff. Any other public comments? I do want to say this board met an executive session February 26th after the last meeting, and tonight, March 4th, for personnel issues, and I forget what else we call it.
Legal.
Is it?
Legal.
Legal. So we did meet earlier tonight. Just wanted to put that on record. Okay, next, Treasury's Activity Report.
Make a motion to accept the Treasury's Activity Report for February 2024.
Motion or a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Opposed?
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for February 5th, 2024.
Motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions or changes in the minutes?
Yep.
Anybody from the public? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Opposed? Approved. Committee recommendations. First, Community Development Committee. The committee recommends the Board of Commissioners take action on the following. Code enforcement, we have none. Land development subdivision applications. We recommend a motion to approve Resolution R 2024-3 granting a preliminary land development with conditions for Wind Valley LLC Greg Asplun to consolidate four adjoining parcels located at Turwood Road. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. This is kind of unusual. We normally get it the other way. This is kind of nice to hear. Before I go to the one waiver, would you like to say anything on this? No, good. This is actually in the benefit of the township. So we have one waiver, which is A 300-50 from the requirement of a preliminary plan submission to permit applicant plan to be classified as preliminary final as no public or private site improvements are proposed. This has all been talked about in our committee meeting. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any public comments? Any board comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained? Okay, approved. Now we go back to the actual motion to grant this, which is, the waiver 2024-3. We had no questions prior, we have no public comment. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained? Approved. Okay, thank you. Next, a list of upcoming zoning hearing board applications. We had one. Oops. There it is. Okay. Petition of Mario Alfons, a property located at 611 Birchwood Road of Upper Moreland Township. They're seeking a side yard setback of two and a half feet instead of the minimum of 10 feet for an accessory building in the front of rear yard building line. Applicant proposes to construct an 18 and a half foot by 19.7 foot gazebo in the rear yard. That is just for information only. All right, next, a motion to approve setting a public hearing on April 1st, 2024 for a conditional use application submitted by ATR Logistics LLC for the property located at 1750 County Line Road.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. This was talked in committee just to get a public hearing, and we are just setting the date for April 1st. That will be a public hearing that they will put everything in front of us, what they would like to do. And at that point, I guess, would you have a resolution ready in case the board decides? We do not have to vote on it that night. It can be, as long as it's within 45 days. So, but sometimes we're ready and we vote. Thank you, Sean. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussions on this? Any public discussions? No, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained? Approved. So we will have the hearing on April 1st. Next, motion to approve the asbestos abatement proposal for 101, 102, 103 Lori Lane and 304 Surrey Lane.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. This was discussed in committee. These are the four houses being bought by us through FEMA. It's the same as the houses behind us. We did get a price from the company that did the two houses behind us that we bought and tore down directly behind us. We have to do this just in case, if there is asbestos in the house, it doesn't hold up everything for months because the contractor won't continue. So that is the reason why we have to get an asbestos certificate for this. Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Public? No. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Opposed? Approved. Next, Public Health and Safety Committee.
Yes, good evening. The Public Health and Safety Committee has no business before the board tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Next, Finance Administration Committee.
Yes, the committee makes a motion to approve the list of appointments, the six appointments and reappointments.
Second.
We detailed these in committee. Are any of these candidates here? I don't think so, no. Okay. Yeah, we discussed them in committee and moved them forward, and they're recommended.
Okay. Any other discussion from the board? From the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained? Approved.
Next, the committee recommends the approval of the following checks. General fund check beginning with number 140247, ending with 140505, in the amount of $1,255,763.72, with one void. Escrow fund checks beginning with 9735, ending with 9759, in total of $18,077.23. And liquid fuel fund checks beginning with 3112, ending with 3116, for a total of $13,789.89.
Okay. Are there any discussions on any of these? From the board? From the public? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained? Approved. So we will have the hearing on April 1st. Next, motion to approve the asbestos abatement proposal for 101, 102, 103 Lori Lane and 304 Surrey Lane.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. This was discussed in committee. These are the four houses being bought by us through FEMA. It's the same as the houses behind us. We did get a price from the company that did the two houses behind us that we bought and tore down directly behind us. We have to do this just in case, if there is asbestos in the house, it doesn't hold up everything for months because the contractor won't continue. So that is the reason why we have to get an asbestos certificate for this. Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Public? No. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Opposed? Approved. We have a motion to approve the waiver of permit fees for the Parks and Recreation Department for roofing at Mason Mill Park Buildings.
Second.
Thank you, you got a second. And then discussion, this is for our own buildings in the park. They do have to file the permits with Paul and go through everything, it's just we're waiving the price. Is there any other questions from the board? From the public? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Opposed? Approved. Next, Public Health and Safety Committee.
Yes, good evening. The Public Health and Safety Committee has no business before the board tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Next, Finance Administration Committee.
Yes, the committee makes a motion to approve the list of appointments, the six appointments and reappointments.
Second.
We detailed these in committee. Are any of these candidates here? I don't think so, no. Okay. Yeah, we discussed them in committee and moved them forward, and they're recommended.
Okay. Any other discussion from the board? From the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained? Approved.
Next, the committee recommends the approval of the following checks. General fund check beginning with number 140247, ending with 140505, in the amount of $1,255,763.72, with one void. Escrow fund checks beginning with 9735, ending with 9759, in total of $18,077.23. And liquid fuel fund checks beginning with 3112, ending with 3116, for a total of $13,789.89.
Okay. Are there any discussions on any of these? From the board? From the public? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Opposed? And abstained? Approved.
Okay. Next, I make a motion to approve authorizing PFM to proceed with preparing the issuance of a bond. This is for the financing of the police station and other items. It is, we're not making any decisions tonight, just moving forward on the process. Oh, is there a second?
Second.
So we're just continuing the process? We will need to decide at a later meeting the amount and whether we're going to do two bonds or one bond.
Okay, any other questions from the board? From the general public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained? Approved.
Next, I make a motion to approve Clifton Larson Allen LLP for the audit fee schedule they've given us.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion on this?
Nope, we discussed it in committee along with John Bates, the Director of Finance, and decided to move ahead with this company for this next year.
Any other public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained? Approved.
Next, I make a motion to approve the proposal submitted by Eagle Industrial Hygiene Associates to perform inspection and testing of hazardous materials on the township building.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Discussion? Okay, this is, again, just for the quoting and the stuff that we have to do if we're going to do any improvements and send things out to bid and for plans. So, any other questions from the public? Yeah? All in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Opposed? Approved.
And I make a motion to approve the proposal submitted by Office Environments Incorporated for the police station and township building furniture design services.
We have a motion, second?
Second.
You have a second. Anything else on this from the board?
Nothing, just the design for both the buildings for the bid package, so the plans are complete.
That sounds like a big deal. This, how were they selected or were they recommended?
The fee is $7,200, and I think they were recommended by?
KCBA.
Yeah, the architect.
And this is only for the plan. We'll probably go to a Co-Stars dealer when we actually buy something.
I gotta say.
Yes.
Because in 10 years, you don't want people saying, why did they order those chairs?
Yeah. Yeah, this is just the design of where the desks and all that stuff. Any public comment? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain? Approved.
That concludes the motions of the Finance Administration Committee.
Next, we have Parks and Recreation Committee, Mr. Skull.
Yes, Parks and Recreation has two resolutions tonight. The first one is Resolution R 2024-04, authorizing the submission of a greenways trails and recreation program grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. The description is Upper Morlin submitted a grant for this purpose in 2023 to DCED, which was not awarded. Pat Stacey was proposing to reapply for $150,000 from DCED. It's match requirement, but we already have funds at hand for the match.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have the motion. Is there any other questions from the board on this? Again, it was, it was applied for last year, we didn't get it, so we're reapplying again. So, anybody from the general public? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain? Approved.
And the second one is Resolution R 2024-5, authorizing the submission of a grant application for the 2024 round of the Montco 2040 Implementation Grant Program.
Second.
Montgomery County recently announced a new cycle of funding for 2024. The township has used this grant program several times over the years, most recently to fund the warmest of roads sidewalks. We didn't submit an application last year because we'd received several awards in previous years. For 2024, we received only one project suggestion from the staff and consultant, and this was from Pat Stacey of Parks and Recreation. He recommends that the township receive $225,000 to maintain the maximum award for the competition, the construction of the new Wood Lawn Park Plan.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Opposed? Approved.
I think that's good for Parks and Recreation.
Any commissioner comments? Okay, with none, we're adjourned.